Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for June 1st. Councilmember Zepone is absent today. Councilmember Kinnear is appearing virtually. And we have two presentations today. At the end of our meeting, we're going to hear from Kevin Paco on our Unpaved Streets program. But first, we have Dr. Patrick Jones and his colleague to come give us a QR1 economic report. And I'm hoping that right off the bat, before you do that, just give us the briefest of updates on the Priority Spokane meeting yesterday.
You have to start with, "The joke was great."
The joke that Councilmember Stratton gave at the end of her presentation, which drew a big applause. So for those of you who don't know about Priority Spokane, it's the outgrowth or an outgrowth of Spokane community indicators or Spokane trends. And the goal is to take the insights from the data, plus the preferences of the people who participate, extend the process to a large group of people, and come up with three or four priorities that can be addressed over the next five years. And that's what happened yesterday in our final meeting that Council President Beggs was at and Councilmember Stratton presented at. Thank you. And so we chose, if I recall, we being the, there's about 200 people who showed up, which we were very pleased to see. There was, as Council President Beggs was saying, a priority on looking at mental health and public safety. That was something that you presented. There was a priority looking at childcare, early child learning facilities, which we haven't considered before. And I'm trying to remember the other two.
Environment.
Tree canopy.
Tree canopy.
And innovative home options, which were neck and neck. And I don't, there were some paper ballots, so I'm imagining that the paper ballots might have decided that.
Yes, that's true. So for the first time in environmental, we have six groups, one of them being land use and the environment. Environmental priority rose to the top, and this was tree canopy for lots of different reasons, yeah. So that was Priority Spokane, and you might be hearing from the Executive Director Ryan Ulrich in the not-too-distant future about where we go from here. But I was very proud of my community as we all came together yesterday and deliberated, and I thought, took a vote in a very timely manner, and set the course, we hope, for the next four or five years.
A good turnout.
And we had a very good turnout.
I think there were a couple hundred people.
Correct, yeah, that's the biggest turnout we've had. We've been doing this since 2009, so I'm happy to say that we're staying the course. So what we want to do today is give you the latest update that we've done. This is the first quarter dashboard for the economic indicators that the city would like us to track. And if we can get that on the screen, we're good to go. Thank you. So we'll try to make this fast. We have about 30 slides. As before, we're going to be looking at population, employment, construction, and then taxable sales. We're trying to give you all these indicators on the basis of the cities, but sometimes we can't, so it's to the basis of the county. This is one that we can give you on the basis of city data. And by the way, we have a lot more data on race and ethnicity now in Spokane trends than we had at the start of the process in the fall. So this is looking at the city of Spokane, and I'm going to show you three or four different slides that are taken directly from the trends. So we're first going to look at those people, we want to call it, people are colored by race, and you can see what that includes here, and the share of the population in the city of Spokane currently. And you can see it's 7.2%, not any growth basically for the past decade. The shares are a bit higher than we see in the county in the city of Spokane for race. Now let's look at what typically is called an ethnicity in the way census keeps track of this, and this is almost exclusively the Latinx community, so Hispanic Latinos. And a few years ago, this was a total, this is the lighter T.O. bar, 5%, and now that is 7.5% roughly. This is the largest of the communities of color in the city of Spokane, and you can see it's grown fairly well. And then finally, the category that is the largest growing by percentage terms, and this is interracial or two or more races, and going back to 2012, this was 3.8%, and now we're looking at 6.2%. So add this all together, and this is what we end up with. 21% are one out of every five residents in the city of Spokane is a person of color, which might surprise people because I think their perception is a little bit less than that. I just wanted to throw the U.S. results up there. This is easily seen on the trends indicator for this. So people of color in the U.S. as a share of the total population is 42%. So 21% in the city of Spokane, 42% nationwide, so twice as much. But, but, I'll get there in just a sec, the growth rate in the city of Spokane has been just reversed. We're growing that population, the city of Spokane, twice as fast as it is growing in the United States. Question?
Yeah, is there a way to extrapolate kind of what percentage is from birth versus those who are relocating to Spokane?
No, I mean, the short answer is no. We can look at people born in another country, but to the best of my knowledge, that data isn't broken down by country. It's just an aggregate, same foreign-born. Yeah, we would love to be able to have, as I've said before, a turnstile at the gate of Spokane County to know who's coming in and who's leaving, but we don't. But I just want to share this with you. So this is a little different result than we've seen the county overall, this 21%. And so just to wrap up this, here we go, this little survey of where might we be by the end of the decade? And so this is a time series you see on Spokane Trends. And just doing some extrapolating on a compounded annual growth rate, if the trends were to continue that we see today, this is what we would have in 2020. The U.S. would be 50% people of color, Washington State would be 46, the city would be 27%. However, the demographers who track this, and we're not one of them in the shop, but we do read their results, basically say the growth rates are going to decrease over the next few years for a variety of reasons. So just taking a straight linear extrapolation is probably incorrect, but I think it's clear to say that at a certain point, and I've seen this at 2040 from reliable groups in D.C., that the U.S. will be at 50%, and I haven't seen it for the state. So where will we be in the city of Spokane? Well, I think, given our growth rate that we've seen over the last few years, it may not be a 27% share, but I'm, I'd put my money on 25%. So just imagine one out of every four Spokane city residents will be a person of color by the end of the decade. So I just wanted to, we always try to give you a little sense of where a population is going, and this is just the latest dimension of that that we thought you'd find interesting. Where is that mouse? Here we go. Okay. You've seen this before, so back to Councilmember Cathcart's question about in-migration. We have a pretty easy way of tracking this for people who come out of state. We have actually a very poor way of tracking it for people who move within the state. We do, we can track that, but it comes with a three-year delay, so we don't show it. But this is looking at driver's license surrenders that are transacted at a Department of Licensing office, and doing it by quarter, and looking at the numbers and the rate of growth. And so it looks a little goofy because of what happened in the immediate aftermath of the pandemic lifting sort of the siege, the state of siege we're in. You can see there, it went up almost from zero to between, let's say, 2,800, so that meant a gigantic percentage increase. But most of the percentage increases are close to, oh, they're single digits, from year over year for the same quarter. What I wanted to point out here is that despite what I think a lot of people think about what's going on in people moving out of the really big urban areas and into a modest-sized urban area like Spokane, it's not showing up in the out-of-state data. So what we find, and this is the latest numbers we have from Department of Licensing, that the fourth quarter '22 was actually the lowest of all the most recent fourth quarters, 2021, 2020, and 2019. And overall, just as an annual basis, 2022, in terms of out-of-state, in-migration, was lower than the prior three years as well. So if we are growing at a disproportionately high rate through in-migration, it's got to be coming from counties within the state of Washington. And we've done some analysis on that, and if you'd like, the next time we present to you, we can, we can show you those data, even if they are a bit old. And you might find it interesting where people are coming from in the state of, state of Washington. Nationwide, though, people are coming from, no surprise, California first, no surprise, Idaho second, no surprise, Oregon third, but a surprise for me, and perhaps you, is that fourth place is Arizona and fifth place is Texas. So.
I think that makes sense, and reason being, you know, there's this idea of the great sort that's happening right now, is people are choosing where they want to be planting their roots based on, you know, political beliefs and ideologies, and, you know, people moving out of the state to go to more conservative ones. And I think Arizona makes sense for Texas as well, for, you know, people leaving a more conservative state, or Arizona, a more conservative state for a more liberal one. I think that that tends to make a lot of sense based on what I, you know, see nationwide, so, yeah.
Okay, well, maybe we'll get more direct flights to Arizona and Texas on the basis of this. So we never know what might be the outcome of these data. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cullen right now. As you may recall, she takes over the labor, the labor market look at the city of Spokane, not the county, but we're able to deliver just for the city itself what's going on in the labor market. So Kelly?
Yep. So you've seen these before. We've just added the most recent quarter as well. Actually, it's a little behind because we're a little late in presenting, I think, in this case. So there have been some updates. We will catch those up at the next time that we meet. And so this is the labor force, and so this is made up of those that are employed and unemployed, right? And so what we're seeing in this case, if you look at the purple bars, that's the height, that's the number of, the size of the labor force. We're going back up again. We're almost to our previous peak, which is nice. So we're just under, what is it, 115,000 workers in 2022. We probably went over that just recently. So things are looking good in terms of, we survived the pandemic, and we have stabilized again, and should be going above that 115 shortly. So labor force is looking good. Number of jobs, and so this is pretty flat. You look at the height of those purple bars, I have the blue arrow there for you. So we peaked at a high of over 108.5, and there was a slight drop-off to 107, but we have flattened here, stabilized, which is really good news, right? Compared to one year ago, Q1 of 2022, we're slightly lower, still slightly lower, but nothing to be too alarmed about, I don't think. So the local economy seems to, again, have recovered, returning to what we call the new normal, right? So things are looking okay here. This is monthly unemployment. Again, it's going to be a little behind. We did these slides back in April, or even, yeah, April, I think we did these slides. We've had a couple more months of data come in since then. But you can see that the height of the bar is the rate, and we are, is the number of unemployed, and then the rates. And we have it broke down by the city and the county as well, but you can see that they're trending pretty closely, right? So we trend pretty closely with the county as well. And so what were we, Washington State was about 4.2, the U.S. at about 3.5, slightly lower, and we were just over 5, right? So we were just over 5, 5.3, in the most recent data that we have here. So slightly higher than the state and the nation, but still what we would consider to be a healthy rate of unemployment, right? And the actual number of people unemployed in March is similar to what we had back in November. So not, we're not seeing any surges of unemployment or anything to be concerned about at this point without rising, because we hit a post-pandemic low, so we're rising again, but we're not, you know, accelerating by any means.
Can I ask you a question on that real quick?
Oh, go back, yeah, sure.
It seems like there's a pattern in that, that, you know, going into the winter or whatever, that those numbers change. Is there an explanation for that, seasonal, like, summer jobs or something?
Absolutely. There's a lot of seasonality when you're looking at monthly unemployment in particular.
These are not seasonably adjusted.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah, you will pick up that cyclical behavior in there, yep. Yeah, like in January, jobs fall off after the holiday season and things like that, yep, for sure. All right. Oh, so basically, yeah, that's what we looked at. So after two quarters of declining, we have rebounded again, and we're about to go into perhaps a record high, you know, recent high. So employment levels, although we're slightly below, the last four quarters have seen this leveling off that I was talking about. And then the March unemployment rate decreased slightly to 5.3 a year ago, so year over year, from a year ago, right? But it's currently above the state and the U.S. averages, and we're very close trending with the county overall. So I don't see anything too alarming in here, and it looks like we don't have much lingering from the pandemic, so I think it bodes well for the future.
Is that it?
Yep, I think, isn't that what I got?
I just want to point out, historically, Spokane County, Spokane City have had higher unemployment rates than the state as a whole. This is just normal, and it could be lots of reasons for that, which we could talk another time, but it's, as you may expect, it's being driven by, the state results are being driven by King County, Snohomish County, and their unemployment rates are less than 3%. So that's pretty, pretty low. Economists would say that's pretty inflationary if the labor market's that tight. Okay, so as we do before, we're going to, we're going to walk you through quickly where people work and what's most important to the city. There's 19 of these sectors. I think we show now eight. We've added construction after Councilmember Bingle asked us to do that. We're going to lead with the largest sectors and end up with the smallest of the key sectors. And sometimes the graphs are going to look a little goofy because of that, but we're trying to keep the same scale, both on the left-hand side of up to 50,000, and then on the right-hand side of the percentage change. The percentage change is the line, and the count is the bar. And we do this, again, on a year-over-year basis, the same quarter before. So healthcare and social assistance basically is looking at modest growth, but I just stress modest, but it is happening. And so we see now the count in quarter three of 2022 was above the pre-pandemic count, which we're not showing, just for exposition purposes, by nearly 1,800. Okay, so this is the largest sector by far in our county, and it pays about the average, which might surprise you when you think of doctors and hospitals and nurses, but there's a lot of jobs that are part of the healthcare sector that aren't particularly high-paying. The second-largest sector is retailing. Spokane has always been a retail center. We had pretty good recovery here, and this is third-quarter data that we're focusing on, but then since then, on a year-over-year basis, it has declined, and that's what you see basically on this red line. It's 0% growth. So retailing is not an engine of growth from a labor perspective in our community. We are about equal to where we were at the start of the pandemic for the third quarter, however. Average annual wage is about $40,000 versus the $57,000 for the all-county number. This has come up a lot in the last two or three years for one reason, and that's that big warehouse out on the West Plains. That's driven the changes that we see in wages for this particular sector. And statewide, it's even more dramatic.
What would, what would the hourly rate be for somebody making $40,000? Do you know that off the top of your head?
$20.
$20 an hour? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, next is hotels and restaurants and bars and coffee shops from an employment perspective. It's the fourth-largest sector. By the way, the second-largest sector is government, which we don't show. That has not been a growth sector, and if you want us to show it, we'll be happy to do it, but we thought we'd stay with the private sector. So hospitality was the one that really got hammered among all the large sectors in the pandemic. Recovery started in 2021. It continued robustly into 2022, so that this number right here is higher than it was pre-pandemic. So the hospitality business has recovered, thankfully, because they were, this was a percentage decline that was kind of off the charts, 26%, 27% year-over-year decline. That, it had to be really tough for employees and employers in that sector. That, it had to be really tough for employees and employers in that sector. Notable here is that, as I think you know this before, and I know that Councilmember Bingle has said, well, this doesn't reflect all the wages because of tips. And, yeah, we, we know that, but this is what's reported. That's all we can show you. Interestingly, and this is true across the United States, there's been a marked increase in wages in this sector to attract people in, into those jobs. They've really had to bid up the wages. So we don't see anything close to a 37% increase in terms of wages in any sector, but it's happening here. Okay, a key sector for any economic development strategist is looking at manufacturing. Manufacturing has multiple benefits. We're, as a country, we're going through the reshoring, onshoring, friendshoring, whatever we want to call it, transition right now. And we'll see what that does to manufacturing in general in the United States and what it does to the Spokane economy. Again, these are, these are county numbers. So this is the fifth largest sector. It started recovering in 2021, accelerated in 2022, but we're still not, as of Q3 of last year, we're still not where we were pre-pandemic. And this is something we all need to keep in mind when we think about manufacturing. It's a very robust sector, but machines and automation, computers really play an increasingly important role. So I certainly don't see that, and we'll be tracking this statewide as a part of another project that the institute does. We don't see a doubling of manufacturing jobs such as the state has put out as a goal through the end of the decade. We just think that's, that's a bit unrealistic. The, the pay on an average basis is about $4,000 higher than the, than the average throughout the county. And the supply chains give usually manufacturing a much higher multiplier value in terms of their economic impact. Okay, here's construction, sixth largest sector, very strong recovery. The count now is way above what it was pre-pandemic. You can see we're looking at about 14,300 in this sector. And here too, the, the average pay is, the average for the sector is above the overall average. So construction jobs are good jobs. And I don't know if you saw the spokesman this morning, there was a little story on, on high school students learning the trades. And I suspect that will continue.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Do you, do you guys by chance know how the numbers today compare to what the numbers looked like just before the Great Recession with regards to construction?
We can get that number. The data do exist, so, yeah.
I know there's a significant drop off in the years, you know, following.
Yes, no, you're absolutely right.
I'd be curious to see.
You're absolutely right. And I think that's one of the, one of the problems we see in, in looking at housing prices is that, that same supply of firms and workers isn't what it used to be pre-Great Recession. So good point, and I think we can give you some heads up on that one.
Great.
Okay, I think we're basically done with this. Oh, two more. So this is something that has typically been an urban sector, the white-collar group, if you want to call it that way. So lawyers, accountants, architects, engineers, computer consultants. There has been a modest growth in this sector over, over the last couple of years so that we have here in the third quarter of last year, the unemployment had, had gone, surpassed where we were pre-pandemic. Overall, we have about, I'd say roughly, exaggerating a little bit, about 12,000 recently in our community that occupy this. Beyond the notion that this is a city-centric kind of sector or city-centric set of industries is the average annual wage, which you can see is 82,000, which is way above what we see for, for the county as a whole. Okay. Then the last one. The ninth largest sector, we included this because it is a very urban, somewhat downtown-focused center. However, it is shedding workers, and this has been a bit of a surprise to me. This includes both insurance and, and banking and credit unions, companies. So that the amount here we saw was about a little less than 9,800. And we go back two years to 10,200. Why do we care about this? Just look at what these people earn on average, 100,000. And that's far above what we, what we see county-wide. So just to wrap up, with some notable exceptions, finance, retail, manufacturing, the large sectors now have, with their employment, have surpassed where we were at the start of the pandemic. So good thing. Percentage terms, professional technical services has grown the fastest. In absolute terms, it's healthcare, no surprise, given the size of its sector that's, that's grown the fastest. So I'm gonna turn it back to Kelly, and she's gonna, she's gonna walk you through now something really critical to, I think, city operations. And I know that we, we talked to the city a bit about this, is what's going on in, in construction. So go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, well, we have the building permits broke down into different categories. And so the first one here is the residential, single-family. So residential permits in this case, again, the purple bars represent the actual number. And then that red line gives you the trend, the year-over-year, so same quarter, previous year, how it has been doing. And so you can see that the most recent quarter we had with the first quarter of this year, first quarter of '23, slightly lower than the same quarter in the last two years. But new construction of single-family residence still is strong, but it's stabilizing. We did see a surge, you know, after, right immediately after the pandemic, but things are settling down a little bit. In 2022, the previous year, there were 270 new single-family houses permitted, approximately the same as were in the pre-pandemic period '18 and '19. So '22 is showing that we're returning to where we were at least in the pre-pandemic era. And since 2018, just to give you some perspective, you'd think that being the same level we were in '18, '19 might be good, but over that same time period, we've grown. So in terms of needing more housing, needing more single-family housing, you can see that the population has grown by 28,000 since 2018, but we're still permitting at that same level. So just a little bit there, but we are permitting. Multifamily in this case, this is the multifamily, and this is by number of units, not by the actual number of permits. A single permit can have, you know, over 100 or some units being built. And so again, you see in this case, we see some growth. So the construction of the new family or the multifamily housing is very strong. So whereas the single family is not as strong, this multifamily. So we are seeing an increase in multifamily units being constructed throughout the area. And so in this case, there are, we're more, we're above where we were at the pre-pandemic level. We saw the first quarter of '23 in particular, a couple of big complexes. And so, you know, one or two big projects can really make the numbers jump in this case. And so that, so don't, you know, think it's going crazy or anything, it's just maybe two projects. But significant projects in terms of the amount of housing that it will provide to our families. So the first quarter of '23, we had more multifamily units that were permitted than the entire year of '19. So just giving you a sense, yeah, question?
Does this break it down at all, affordable versus market rate?
We don't know what rent they're going to charge.
Okay, okay.
If I could do that, I do have the value for the overall construction, does that make sense? And the number of units, so we can give you an approximate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, yeah, great question though, for sure. That's what we want to know, right? And so where we go, oh, the first four months of 2023, because I had April data, so I included that, even though it wasn't first quarter. I just threw April in there because April was also hot. So 511 permitted multifamily units just since the start of 2023 through April. Another spike is coming for 2023 is what we're thinking, I'm thinking. So in addition, I wanted to point this out, that we're starting to track this now, which is really neat. And the data, we're starting to get more on our reports. And so we see that there are units that are being converted from other uses into multifamily housing. And so there were 15 units that were converted slash remodeled, change in use designation in this case. So there is additional housing being provided through this means, which I think is kind of neat as well, to add to the actual permits of new housing. We have this conversion going on too. So looking then at the value, the question would be, what are these houses that are building worth? You can see the blue trend line, obviously, it's been rising over time and continuing to do so, right? So the average value of our permitted single-family residence continues to increase. We're up over 416, almost 417,000, right? And so in quarter one of this year, our single-family residents, oh, so I wanted to provide, I think it was asked at the last meeting, rather than just have the average, if you could get some better sense of what that distribution looked like. And so in this case, I ran a little bit more statistics on this. The median is 400, and the range, the lowest value of the permitted housing was 250,000. And then the highest was, what was it, 890? But through statistical analysis, that 890 is actually an outlier, and that the next highest was in the 600s. So in terms of, if you look at box and whisker plot, the middle 50% of the permits were between, what, 335 and 470? So a good chunk of the housing is in that range, so not too, too high, does that make sense? That does mean that there's 25% of those permits that are below the 335. So 25% of those permits would be between 250 and 335. Does that make sense?
For a, for a single-family residence?
Single-family residence, correct. These are single-family, new, new single-family construction.
So Councilmember Stratton, does this conform to your notion of low-income housing?
I don't know.
That depends where you draw the line, right?
I guess so, yes.
Right?
Correct.
Yes. So, yeah, so the upper 50, upper 25% went up to that 664, right? And then I said that 890 was a standalone outlier when you run the statistical analysis. So any questions on that one? So that's the single-family value. And then the question about the multifamily. So this is the average value of the permitted value. Again, keeping in mind, we don't know what they're actually going to charge for the rent, but we do know what the value of the overall permit. We can divide that by the number of units that were permitted and get a sense of the average value. And you can see here that it's kind of flat in the last four quarters, the blue line, right? So in this case, around 150,000 is the value of those multifamily units. Last four quarters have seen 150. And then if you look here, this red line, it was below at 120. So there is a jump, right? There is a jump here from building multifamily units that were more in the 120, 120,000 per unit, up to where we are now, stabilizing around 150,000.
And that's per unit, right?
Per unit.
Okay.
Per unit, yep. You just take the total value of the construction project and divide by their number of units. So real simple calculation. That's the best we can do. And since 2020, so the rate of increase in the average value of the multifamily units has risen more slowly than the single family. So, question?
Are you able to break this down between housing developed by nonprofit builders versus for-profit?
Oh, shoot. I did not get the detail on that. I can do that next time. I think you asked that question last time, didn't you? Dang it, I forgot to do that.
That's okay.
I will, when I get this most recent data, the building permits, I will go through that a little bit more and see if I can make that determination. I'll find that column, that's profit, nonprofit on there for you. Yes, thank you for reminding me of that.
And I was just going to add to your question. This data doesn't really tell whether it's for low-income people because it costs the same to build a Haven unit as another unit. It's just that the tenant isn't going to pay. So that's like a whole different, but, but probably SLIC can get us that information.
It complicates it, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so then moving to non-residential construction. This is commercial and public development, and this is much more volatile in general, often downs and in some cases cyclical, right? Some quarters, year-over-year are slower, especially the winter months, there's not a lot of permitting activity. But then there is, you know, early in the year to get ready for the construction in the spring and the summer. You can see here, let me refresh my memory. So you can see the most recent quarter is down slightly, but, and below what it was the, the previous quarter. And so, I'm trying to think, what is this? Annual non-residential permits were 15% higher in 2022 compared to 2021, that pandemic period, right? So an increase of over 200 permits. You can see that jump in those red lines that I'm showing you there. So those are our most active quarters. The most recent quarter, first quarter of '23, is a slower quarter. But, so it is slightly slower than the, the previous quarters. But I don't see that one spike or one drop being a concern. And so although the slower quarters of Q4 of '22 and Q1 of '23 have showed fewer total permits than the same period a year ago, 547 versus 582, so you get a sense of the scale of how, how much that is off. It's not likely for concern. In particular, just look at the large amount of permitting that just went on just before them. So a slight little surge there. It's okay to have a little bit of a break, I think, in this case. So nothing too alarming yet in this case. Value is typically, again, all over, depending on the types of projects. And this is very heterogeneous. I mean, you've got all kinds of different types of construction that fall under the realm of non-residential permits. So it's kind of cool to see all the different categories, I think. But so in this case, total permitted, oh, this is value, right? You got, you do see a spike, and that's a spike, I think I pointed this out to you in, in other ones before. Those are some school projects that, that were significant that caused that one big spike. And so 2022 saw an increase from 2021 in terms of the value and a similar amount of permitting activity. So nothing, if you look at an annual basis, right, not necessarily these quarter-to-quarter fluctuations, but on an annual basis, we're still doing okay, I think, in terms of these values and the amount of permitting activity. What did we, I wrote, I always like to highlight some of the things. So Q1 to 2023, there was $8 million for a new hangar at the airport, if you're interested what some of these projects are, right? And then $2 million for schools and educational buildings. Were part of that new construction in first quarter '23 that's happening right now. And again, like I said, it's very heterogeneous, there's a variety of non-residential construction, which is good. So I wouldn't worry too much, the, the value has fallen just slightly. We'll have to wait and see what happens in terms of all this. So lastly, let me make sure I didn't miss anything. So the amount of permitting for our new single-family residences has flattened, is stabilizing, right? Amount of permitting for new multifamily units, though, is continuing very strong. And the average value is now up over 150,000 compared to where it was at about 120. And the quantity of non-residential permitting and the value has increased slightly over the last three years. So don't see any cause for alarm that the last, the first quarter of this year looked a little sluggish. And again, we do see a wide variety, which is good. We like that in an economy to have some diversity, so. Yeah, go ahead, any questions?
Do we have any data on mobile homes? Do we track any of that for the region?
Oh.
It's something we don't.
Go ahead.
They, they wouldn't show up in these numbers.
They would show up.
Councilmember, but yeah, they are available on the trend site. There is a, there's an indicator that talks about the types of residences. And it's multifamily, single-family and mobile homes.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's a very static number, not, not a lot of change over, over the last 15 years.
I think that's it for.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think that's it for me. Hold on.
I'll wrap up.
Make sure, yep, you got sales.
So what does this all mean for city finances? So we're just going to end up, as we always do, with looking at taxable retail sales. When we did this, we only had Q3 of last year. Since then, we've gotten the fourth quarter. So we're just going to report out, from the graph anyway, what it looks like for the city for the third quarter. And you can see just the size of the bar, where's the mouse here? Considerably higher than 2021 and higher than 2020, and much higher by 1.5 billion, 1.5 billion than pre-pandemic 2019. So this is a pretty, this is a pretty, if you were to fit a curve, plot a line through here, and that's, that's, it's a pretty steep, steep growth. Does not mean that that's going to continue though, I think for, for lots of reasons that, that we could talk about. So I made a, made a, just a prediction when we wrote this up in April. So I made a, made a, just a prediction when we wrote this up in April, that the fourth quarter, when we see the data, are going to show low, single-digit year-over-year gains. By the way, this is the city of Spokane. This is the state, and in between is the county of Spokane. So you see that recently, this red line has been dipping below the state of Washington after actually being above the state of Washington with a year-over-year growth rate for a bit of the pandemic. So what did my little prediction turn out to be when we, we just got these numbers from DOR? Low single digits turned out to be really low. For the fourth quarter, the city of Spokane came in at 0.8%, or a little less than 1% year-over-year for the fourth quarter. The county, this, this, this line came in at 3.4%, and the state of Washington came in at 6%. So we're, we're in a position right now as a city where we're underperforming on taxable retail sales, those two benchmarks. And we just, you could then look at the 2022 results all told, and the city went up 4.6% for the year, which is fairly, fairly reasonable. Remember, though, inflation is running pretty high, so if you make that inflation adjusted, it's, it's not a big number, might even be negative. Spokane County came in a bit higher, 5.5%, so 4.6 to 5.5. And the state came in at 8.1% for 2022. So 2022 was not a particularly robust year for the city of Spokane and taxable retail sales, as you may have heard already from Tanya. So where are we beyond this? And I, I typically show this to you at, it's, these are statewide retail taxable sales which come out much faster than we get the county and the city levels. And they give usually a pretty good idea of where we're heading. So you can see that in January statewide, it went up 8%. However, statewide in February went up 1%, and statewide in March went up 0%. So this is one of the things I'd like to leave you with, not to be a Cassandra about, about this outlook, but it, it is definitely different than the pandemic retail taxable spending that we saw in 2021 and for somewhat of 2022. Yes.
For, so for planning purposes, then, future budget kind of decisions, what in your mind would be the, the growth factor that we should be thinking about and considering?
So that, that kind of concludes our, our slides with, with, with the look. And I'll just, I'll just say, economists think that retail spending, taxable retail sales essentially, consumption, is intimately tied to what our estimates of our income. And so these are the income estimates for the state, what we call personal income. And the green bar was the most recent forecast we had from the state. And the light green bar is what we showed you before from November, so March versus November, just to see the changes. And you can see that for calendar year 2022, the state's looking at personal income of 2.7%. So that's behind us. But for 2023, which we're almost half the way through, at 4.7%. And calendar year 2024, about the same. These have come down, however, and we just got this forecast out three days ago from Olympia. So for calendar year 2023, the state now is forecasting 5%, but it drops to 4, to 4.3%. So I, I don't want to presume to know what Tanya is going to tell you, but I, I would, I, I would say you certainly don't want to go, for planning purposes, above these personal income numbers. These are, these are pretty accurate in their forecast. So, you know, keep it below, keep it below these, what I call low-single-digit. Taxable retail sales, I don't have any update from, from the, the March outlook. So we have outlooks in March, June from the state, and September and November. So this is the March outlook, and this is the taxable retail sales outlook for the state for fiscal years 2023. So that's half, we're, we're basically almost done with fiscal year 2023, 4.8%. But the state is forecasting less than 1% for fiscal year 2024. In other words, what starts July 1 goes to June 30th, and then for the year after that, a little less than 4%. So that's, that's what the state's saying. And as we note in the slides, there's a high, high, high correlation between Spokane and Washington taxable retail sales. When I started out in this business of the institute, a lot of people said that we're so different in Spokane, aren't we? Not really. We're, we're, we follow pretty closely to what, what happens in the state. So that's it. Just, just leave you with that. I think it's in your slides. I don't want to take any more of your time, but we thank you for giving us the opportunity to take these deeper dives into what's happening.
One more quick question. Do we have the number of people who are of working age in our county who are not participating in the labor force?
Yes.
Okay. Was that in there? Did I miss it, or is it?
No. I'm just writing an, an op-ed for the Journal of Business on that today.
Oh, wonderful.
Funny you ask.
Okay.
Yeah, that's called the participation rate. And so if you want to, it's usually, Spokane County, not the city, is about 50, 59%. So you take the, the, the reciprocal of that, it's 41% that are not in the labor force. But you have to recall, that includes 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds, so a lot of students, and includes every age group above 65. So, you know, we can't slice and dice the numbers to look at the prime working age numbers or percentages like the feds are able to do on a national sample, because we just don't have that data at the local level. So we produce something that is widely comparable, which is all ages.
Okay. Is that something that we've seen an increase of people dropping out of the labor force? Yes. Is it a significant increase? Yes. Because while I, you know, appreciate the, the numbers on the, on the unemployment, one of the things all of us who, you know, talk to business owners is that you just can't find people to, to work. And so I look forward to reading your op-ed and seeing what's in it.
I'll send you the slide present I gave at the recent Workforce Summit that has more detail.
Wonderful.
But there's, there are solutions, I think. We, we could consider, I don't know if you want to consider it at the city council level, but as a community, we should be considering some of these solutions.
I would, I look forward to reading that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you both so much. It's just great, great information, even if some of it's scary, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to invite Kevin Paco so work through the Unpaved Streets program.
Good morning, everyone. Just want to do a time check. Do we have, what do we have for time?
We have till 12:30.
12:30, okay.
Unless we get super interested and ask you lots of questions, then we'll keep you longer.
Well, see if I can entertain. We'll see. Kobe, is that being shared or not? I.
Uh, no. If you want to close out, I'll share it in.
Great, thank you.
Yep. I can take care of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we, we spoke, or I presented to you Monday before last on Unpaved Streets more briefly. But also I'll go over some of that information that I shared last week real quick, but try to get down into the details a little bit more. Just some things I want to touch on today. Again, that program kind of overview and principles that we're sort of operating on, get into some of the observations and challenges and lessons learned that we've seen over the last couple of years, share with you some program costs to date, and then kind of start the dialogue or discussion in terms of updating the existing list. Don't expect to make decisions today. I'm anticipating there'll be homework for you all going forward to kind of take these lists and work with them and, and coordinate with each other and get back to me with any changes to priorities. I'll go through this quick. I presented this last time, but just real high-clip overview of the program. It was initially established by council in late 2018, worked through 2019 on terms of framework. First year of construction was 2020. The program allocates $700,000 a year from that local street maintenance pot of dollars to fund this particular program. Again, in order to make that $700,000 stretch as far as we can, a critical principle is just that cost-effective approach. So in order to do this, this is really a strip paving-focused program. I had this graphic last time that I shared, it kind of summarizes it. We're looking for those locations, one that are simple. We're going to do strip paving, drainage is handled via ditches on the side of the road. We aren't doing curb sidewalk. We do pave the driveway approaches or alleyway approaches, if they have any within the block. And again, to keep costs down, we need, really need to prioritize, identify locations that don't have extenuating circumstances or other complexities that add to the scope of the project or that drive the costs up. Again, going back to kind of the, some of the early data and, and process, that initial screening, which is really done at a real high-level GIS level. We didn't go block by block necessarily and kind of verify every, every street in the city. This is really a GIS level analysis. Roughly 550 blocks identified citywide, it kind of fell into this unpaved category. We tried to screen out things in areas that are on perimeters of the city that were maybe platted, but there is no development today. So there was a little bit of screening that was done to focus on areas that are actually developed or partially developed. From there, there were some grouping of projects, again, done via GIS to try to provide some grouping, or I won't call it prioritization, but just sort of categories, if you will, that looked at areas that were closer to schools, centers, and corridors, might have higher traffic because of proximity archeryals, for instance. And then from there, those lists were provided to council, and then council was able to prioritize and provide those priorities back to us, kind of based on those lists we provided to you to work from. So next, getting into observations, challenges, lessons learned. These are just kind of high-clip things. There's a litany of items here. You can read through them on your own a little bit, but just highlight a couple of things. First, when we're going through that product of projects and we're starting to scope them and hand them off to design to actually move forward with them, in some cases, we're finding utility impacts. There might be an old water line that needs replacement. That's a trigger to say, okay, we got to skip that, move on down the priority list because of that cost issue and not wanting to bring any more scope into the project that would increase the costs. We've encountered that on a couple of projects. We have some locations that on further, you know, diving deeper into the project, they're on steeper slopes. That's problematic. Erosion and drainage that can occur. We're having to move past some of those on the priority list and a couple of examples because of those type of conditions that we've encountered when looking at them. In some cases, we're seeing situations where there's private property owner improvements that they have constructed out in the right of way. So it might be planters, little retaining walls, those types of things. It's only happened on one or two occasions, but that would also be a trigger where we say, hey, this is not a great location. Let's move past it on to the next one. Again, trying to keep to those simple projects as, as best we can. Some cases, there's some stormwater issues that we've had to address. Wouldn't say those are real high-cost items, but just something we have to keep in mind. One good situation we've encountered in a few, in a few occasions is there's been a private development that is occurring or we've understood is going to occur shortly on a street that was prioritized. So naturally, we just skip that and go on down the list. That's happened on, on, in several locations, mostly in District 3. I think there's one in District 2 where that occurred as well. In terms of being lean on our costs, we're doing our best to be as lean as we can in terms of our construction administration. I think what I'm seeing and finding, the size and scale of the project and the fact that locations are scattered all over the place, it's difficult for us to be leaner than normal, if you will, in our construction administration because of the size and scale of the project. We just don't get that economy and scale and administration. We're being as lean as we can in terms of our planning and design efforts upfront. This hasn't occurred a lot, but a second-to-last bullet, we've heard once or twice some feedback of concern. Folks maybe questioning or not wanting their street paved because of the concern that that might generate additional traffic on their street. It's not something that, you know, we've heard a lot of, but we've heard that in one, one particular situation. And then ongoing cost escalation, as we've seen across other types of work and projects, costs are going up. It's going to be a challenge to construct. The premise, starting premise was, you know, roughly two blocks per year per council district within that $700,000, potentially at additional.
Not potentially.
Additional location.
It was $100,000 for each council member. That's what it was, but inflation.
Yeah.
Where, can you tell us where the funds are coming from for this?
Local street maintenance. Again, that's $700,000.
C tab money or not?
It's from that overall pot, the overall pot, you know, we add both the TBD dollars and the, I'll call them just the vanilla street maintenance
Okay.
for local streets only, and that's in that combined, combined pot, but it's really coming from that local street, street maintenance side of dollars, which is already stressed, if you will, you know, in terms of limited funding. So raising that $700,000 is going to take away from the local street maintenance that we need to be doing as well. So that's a challenge there. So that, even going down to two blocks a year, so, you know, even distribution, if you will, citywide, I see that's going to be a challenge at, at 700,000. So we can talk more, I have a slide on costs, and we can talk more in the kind of details of that and just some thoughts and ideas I have in that regard. So that's, that's the segue, I guess, into that. This is just, just a quick summary and overview, kind of hard to read on this screen, but what we're seeing, you know, so far to date, roughly 2.6 million over the course of about four years. The first year was a little unique in that it was a limited, it was only 400,000 allocated. That was viewed as the catch-up year because of Falls Avenue construction, which predated this program, but was sort of, you know, included in that discussion.
That was my fault.
Yes.
No, it's what inspired this. It inspired the program, Karen.
It was a great, it was a great project.
Yeah. So then what that breaks down to, program-wide to date, and I'm excluding that Falls Avenue project just because it was unique for a whole number of reasons, and it really technically wasn't part of the unpaid program. But excluding Falls Avenue, that cost breaks out to $113,000 per block. But with this most recent year, and this is where I'm getting to that, hey, that 700,000 is going to be a challenge to, to continue to do two or more a year per council district. This current cycle that's not yet constructed, but it's been awarded as roughly 124,000 per block. So you do the math, at six blocks, now you're up to 750,000. So if you want to add a seventh block, well, now you're at 850 to 900,000. That's an estimated number because the, the construction's not complete yet. That assumes our 10% admin, admin reserve, for instance, on the construction contract. Hopefully, it comes in less than that in terms of change orders. So that number may come, come down when we're all said and done for 2023, but I'd be surprised if it's any less than, say, 115,000. So even with that math, you know, you're still up to that $700,000 number. So we're sort of pushing against that from a, from a budget perspective. This breaks it down by district. So 700,000 District 1, nine, roughly 980 District 2, 970 in District 3. That's not because we're doing less work. It's just so happened that the work in District 1 happens to be, so far, has been some of those ideal situations that are simple and, and, and that is, as a result of that, less costly. An example from last year, we did three blocks of Lacy Street just south of Chief Gary Park Park. There were one after the, one after another, right? So that cuts down on the contractor's mobilization. They're not running around to locations all over the place. They were flat-sized, they had no drainage issues. There's really nothing extra at all that needed to be done. We also did Sitka last year, which technically wasn't a full block. So there's a variety of things. We're, we're doing as much we have done, essentially as much work in District 1, it's just it's been less costly there. So a question for today or going forward, and this is maybe something you periodically have to consider, is there a need or desire to rebalance, sort of catch up, if you will? Depends how you look at it. Do you look at it as we simply want to do the, an equitable quantity of work in each district, which is what we've done so far? Or do you want to be equitable from a financial perspective and spend the same amount of money in, in each district? If you want to do that, you might need to do a catch-up periodically. In this case, it'd be for District 1. In the future, it could be for a different district. Yes.
Well, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe District 1 has the highest percentage of
highest percentage of unpaved roads in the city. Is that correct?
I haven't broken down by percentage. Both District One and District Two have hundreds, very high. Yeah, I'll have to go count them up again, but they both have a lot.
But I, I think my argument would be, I mean, if we're able to come in $250,000 less, then let's, we'll take another project. We'll, we'll get another bit done.
That's, that's up for discussion. I'm just sort of throwing that out there. One way you could do that, and, and again, this could apply to any district going forward is about if that's a desire, is you periodically kind of hit the reset button and go, okay, we're a little out of alignment for a single year, let's do something different in terms of the number of locations. What that would look like in this situation, just the way the math adds up, it would look like something like three locations, say in 2024 in District One, maybe one, by locations, I mean blocks, three blocks in District One, one block each in District Two and Three. That's a way that you could sort of rebalance the scales just based on the normal cost.
That's living within the 700,000.
That's living within the 700,000. And, and frankly, I would discourage us from taking more from street maintenance. Our local street maintenance dollars are already underfunded, you know, that area, not talking arterials, talking local street maintenance. We already don't have the funds we really need to do, to be doing the maintenance, preventative maintenance, periodic rebuilds, those sorts of things within the local street program as is, so.
Can I, yeah, you were first.
I was just going to say, I know it sounds fair to me, but, but obviously I'm going to be a little biased there, so.
Well, and there's the issue of going forward, do we say each district gets a certain amount of money as opposed to trying to?
Yeah.
Go, go back, but just going forward, instead of saying, you get this much money, here's our priorities, spend the money, if you have money left over to do a third block, great.
I would, and I hear you, I would, I would encourage essentially having this discussion periodically, and the reason why is with that finite amount of money, it's hard for us to do half a block. I mean, it doesn't make sense, right?
No, but the next year you could.
Yeah, you could accumulate, but it may, it may take five years for you to accumulate the little leftover money to where you actually got to a point where, hey, we can do an extra block one year. So it doesn't mean you couldn't do that, but that's a different approach than just periodically looking at it this way and saying, okay, where do we stand? Do we need to make an adjustment somewhere or not?
Where, so where do the street maintenance dollars originate?
And you asked that earlier, that's the car tab money.
Right.
And that's the general street dollars that come to, street maintenance dollars that come to the street department.
From where?
Where else?
I believe the root source of that is gas tax dollars, I believe.
Okay, so something we get from the state.
I believe, but there's, there's, there's some other complexities in there in terms of how that money comes, comes to the street department for their street maintenance.
In a lot of our conversation on REIT lately, I've realized that we do take quite a bit for maintenance, street maintenance out of REIT. Is that a, a source of this as well, or is that completely separate?
You know, that's getting into the Clint side of the house in terms of street maintenance because there's REIT One versus REIT Two.
Okay.
On my side of the house, in terms of the capital improvements, REIT Two is that pot of money that's augments those arterial dollars, including arterial street maintenance.
Okay, I guess where I'm trying to go is, is I've, I've just, last year, I heard hardly any complaints about the state of streets. This year, it feels like it's amplified quite a bit. Maybe it's just an election year, I don't know, but it seems like it's, it's another level this year. And so I just wonder, is there a way to kind of give an estimate of how underfunded you see the maintenance being and as something that we could be thinking about?
Yeah, no, then that's, that'd be a great discussion to have. I definitely want to bring in Clint, that's, you know, really his side of the house and his responsibility. I, I get involved when we take those locations and then deliver them from capital, but from what I'm seeing and all the numbers I've seen, yeah, that's a challenge on that local street maintenance side of the house, but I'd want to, want to bring him into the equation to have that, have that larger discussion.
That'd be great.
Councilmember Wilkinson and Councilmember.
Hi, I think some of the elevation of the concerns around the street is our, our street programs with Abbey and the outreach we've been doing in neighborhoods. It's been a long process, it's been a frustrating process, so we have heard more about frustration of streets and what was promised, what hasn't been delivered, is what they, not what they wanted. And so I think that is an impetus for a lot of that frustration that our citizens are hearing.
We also had more cold, this winter was a lot cold, freeze melt thing way more, so. Councilmember Ringel.
Getting back to money, I would.
You don't get the extra money.
I would be okay with the idea of every council district gets a certain amount of money after a rebalancing and making sure that District One got, got a little windfall there since we haven't spent it.
Second.
But if I recall, when we did Falls Avenue, and I know that was before this was a formal process, I think we did Falls Avenue.
Yep.
And then we started this program.
Yeah.
And then District Three, we waited. I think we had to wait because we'd already.
Yes, it was with this kind of similar issue in mind of paving Falls, and that was, that was a relatively expensive project because of some uniqueness that it had. So that's why that first year, I said it was only, it was a partial year and we only built two locations each in District Two and District One.
And then, yeah, so we, District Three waited.
But yeah, and what this really comes down to is every site is different. You know, at the end of the day, there's no way to say we're going to do specifically the exact same amount, spend the exact same amount at each district each year. There's, there's no way to do that. Everything is going to be a little bit different. Again, it's been just a unique situation, in my opinion, where the District One locations have happened to be our simplest, easiest locations. Some of the ones in the other districts have been a little more challenging. Again, we still try to avoid those challenging locations anyhow, but there's, there's no way to completely avoid it or completely have, you know, the same conditions you're dealing with at each site, so.
I think that we should bring Clint because the, like you were, and I know this isn't your specialty, but you're saying, well, the REIT goes to the arterial. I don't know that there's a rule that that has to happen. I think that's our choice. The arterial street levy funds have to go to the arterial, but the REIT funds, I don't think they're limited, it's just any street we own. I think we've just made it.
In terms of our, yeah, yeah, I don't want me to imply it has to, I'm saying that's how it's, that's how it's operated.
Yeah, and my understanding that a lot of that money goes to, to paying salaries out of REIT One, not necessarily to projects themselves, but paying salaries to have people to do it.
I would continue if I was you.
Yes. Something for you guys to discuss amongst yourselves, but I'll need to know that outcome of, you know, what, what is our intent or what is our desire for 2024? Again, getting to the lists. Now, before I do that, I just kind of want to plant some seeds here, if you will. We have some working spreadsheets. I'll show you those real quick, just to give you a snapshot of what they look like. I'm not going to go into the details of them, they're lengthy lists. I'll provide those to you. Jacobi, I don't know if you've already sent those out or not. I can shoot an email out to everyone with some instructions, if you will, if you, there's not a whole lot to them. Some of you are familiar with them from the previous prioritization processes. Just generally asking for July 1st, there's nothing magical about that date. I don't know if that is reasonable or acceptable to you guys in terms of amount of time to kind of look over this and get back to me. And then, I don't know, we have to make any decision today or have anything firm or set in stone, is how frequent do you want to update? I would strongly discourage annual updates because of what I'd mentioned of how we need to go kind of down the priority list sometimes and skip projects. If that priority list is changing every year, that becomes a real challenge for us from a planning and, and design perspective. We also get pinged with questions from the community and they're wondering, hey, you know, where's my project on the list? Well, if we tell them, hey, it looks like you're up in two years, and then that priority changes and now they're off the list, you know, that can be a difficult conversation, obviously. So I prefer three to four years. So far, it's turned out to been a desire to do it every two years. It's fine, we can work with that, but anyhow, it's something just to be thinking about. And again, I don't know that there has to be any, anything formalized there, it could, could vary.
Well, we're definitely due for an update, so let's, we know that.
So with the information that I'll send to you, I just want to share that, I'll just use this as an example, I won't open all of them. We've created some maps, it just gives you a high clip view. It helps you zero in a little bit on where within your district, you're seeing a concentration of the unpaved streets. So there's a pretty clear patterns in both District Two and District Three, District, I'm sorry, District One and District Two. This is District One that's shown here, you know, you see a high concentration in, in Hilliard, in Mini Haha, and Chief Gary, not as many in the other parts of District One as an example. And District Two is similar. You see a heavy concentration in District Two, more in kind of the southern part of East Central, Lincoln Heights, and then in general, kind of along the ridge line where the elevation changes, you have the kind of grid network of streets that's sort of broken and you have some dead end streets or some streets that only lead for a block or so that were never paved. Then you see a little bit kind of going into West Hills as well and kind of Grandview Thorpe, other neighborhoods such as Comstock. I don't think we have a single one in Comstock as an example. So it really varies within District Two. District Three, I didn't mention this earlier, so it was good news, you're unique in that you simply don't have as many in District Three. It's just the nature, I think, of how development, it's not because of.
Cut their allocation by half.
No, I want to, I'm going to add one to the priority list.
Yeah, it's not that there's been a, you know, concerted effort to invest more in there, I think it's just, it's a byproduct of how certain neighborhoods developed in District Three. You do have some, you tend to have some more unique ones that I would suggest need a separate conversation of their own, such as Austin Road.
Yeah.
Technically, it's unpaved, should it really even be considered in this discussion?
What about Panorama Drive?
Panorama as well would be one of like, well, should that even be in here or not? There's other mechanisms, I think, that maybe should be discussed for some of these larger stretches, such as LIDs as an example, might be a much wiser and more logical way.
Take it out of this.
To get, to get, and maybe do a full improvement rather than just strip pave, just as an example. There aren't as many examples like that in District One or Two, but just pointing that out. So we've kind of color coded these, we've identified locations that are already constructed, high and low ranking, that's distinguished based on what, what you've defined to us previously or based on those groupings that I've mentioned that we did in the past. And then for both District Two and Three, a little bit, I'm sorry, District One and Two and a little bit District Three, there were some locations that are just so far have been called unranked. Doesn't mean they can't be pulled forward, but just in trying to create shorter lists to work from, they're kind of been included in that unranked category.
This must be an unpaved street in back of us, right? They're fixing it right now.
It's probably our roofing work is what I'm guessing.
Kevin, I, I make up a story about the unpaved streets, that there were a certain time in our history where somebody had friends at city council or the administration and the home builders there, the developers just weren't required to pave it because, and I think that's one reason why in District Three, there's so much new housing that don't. Is, is there like a timeframe or?
Um, yes and no. I, I, so I'll use this as an example, so District One, what it looks like has happened when you kind of zero in on the detail, you've seen some neighborhoods in Mini Haha and Chief Gary where a decision was made apparently to pave what appears to be their frontage, but not the side streets. So you got a grid network and they're going to front on one street or another, generally there's a pattern of fronting on a east west street or north south street. So you'll see that pattern where the east west street is paved, but the north south streets aren't.
Yeah.
So that's, that's an observation, there was probably a decision made of, hey, that that's the side street, that's not where their driveway is, there's less traffic on it, maybe it doesn't need to be paved. I, I have to, I'm just assuming.
But typically developers would, if they were putting in a bunch of houses, they would have, in today's world.
Yeah, in today's standards requirements, yes. So most of these seem to, where you see a large concentration, it seemed that they occurred sort of post-World War Two, in the maybe the 60s-ish, you know, it seemed like there was maybe a 20. I didn't go back and haven't looked at the timeframe of each of these areas, but that's my gut reaction is there was probably a time period over a couple of decades where that was happening, so.
Well, and to your point, I mean, I think that section of Sitka that we got done last year, you know, there really is nobody that fronts on that little piece of it, but, but my understanding is that that was supposed to have been paved 30 years ago, 40 years ago.
Really?
And it was just signed off and never, never happened, so for whatever reason.
And then, once you've gone a certain time, you know, it's, the opportunity to go back and take any corrective action is obviously lost.
Well, and it's hard to, to do the LIDs because there's not a lot of frontage, so the burden is on only a couple of property owners.
Yes, a lot of these, it'd be harder to do that.
The South Hill ones that I was familiar with were the same thing. They were north, south.
Yep.
And I've asked, it's not something I'm going to get done in my tenure, along with many things, but to revise our LID rules to make it a little broader, because everybody uses the street.
Exactly.
Everyone benefits, same on sidewalks too. It's not just, I mean, you're probably the person that uses it the least, you're, you know, it's like everybody uses it. So figuring out how to broaden our LIDs and then have an area that says, hey, we can all come together and, and then maybe the city match, that's the other thing that I thought. Could we have a part of a program to say, we'll throw this much money into unpaved and we'll put you at the top of the list if you're willing to do an LID and we'll, and that way we'll get more miles paved faster. So just ideas since I'm leaving you in the future.
Yeah. I would, not to get too far off topic, but I would agree that it'd be wise for us to have that conversation on LID as a tool in general, because there's other examples beyond just the unpaved streets where that could be a wise solution that we just, I don't know all the history of why, but we sort of pivoted away from that, you know, eight to 10 years ago or something, and so it'd be probably wise for us to revisit that at some point. Just real quick, just, I'll take, each of the spreadsheets, when I send those out, if you happen to look at other districts outside the ones you're interested in, you'll see that they're a little bit different for each council district, and that's just based on your edits. So these are just working spreadsheets. I'm just taking what you guys have shared back to me and I'm working with those and I haven't changed any of the priority rankings, whatever input you've provided into those in the past as a council, I haven't changed. The only thing I've added, you'll see in each of them in this column A, I've added notes from my end, year constructed, and some reasons on locations that we've had a skip. So this is an example in District Two where we had both grade issues and curbing that created a challenge with, with Hartson, doesn't mean it couldn't be done, but if we were to do it, it's going to cost a lot more and then, you know, sap those funds. We were intending that, we were initially prioritize a couple of streets, that these next four streets are all kind of in the same network, close to each other. We had prioritized a couple of them, once we got into it, working with the water department, they had concerns about the water lines and potential leaks of working on that street. They would really need to replace the water line in advance of us doing the unpaved street, so we needed to set those aside and pivot to the next ones. And that's an example of why, you know, for this last year on 2023, for District Two, we ended up going a little bit down the list. That's still from your top rankings, we haven't gone off the list and, you know, down into unranked streets. We're always constructing or pulling from those higher priorities. In District Two's case, in District Three, you actually did a numerical priority ranking. District One, just group them. However you want to do it is fine with us. Any way you want to do that is fine in terms of how you want to prioritize. If you just want to do, you know, groups, we just do recognize, we do need that latitude and flexibility when we get into the details, if we discover something that makes it not a good candidate, the ability to move down the list. Again, I want to emphasize, doesn't mean it's deleted forever and, you know, moved, removed from the list, just, it's going to reside there, we could come back later and have a future discussion about is there a way to deal with it or work around it.
Quick, quick question, just to bring up a pain point for all of us. Have you adjusted them for the new district boundaries?
Yes, I was interested in that as well. Didn't go block by block, but so far, I don't know that I've noticed anything that's been affected by it.
Okay.
That's since so much of the, of those boundary changes occurred more downtown, it happened to be in areas where there's, as far as I can tell so far, not really any impacts to it yet.
Yeah, great.
Any other questions for now?
Awesome. So you're going to send this out?
Yeah, so next steps, I'll send you these spreadsheets, I'll send you those maps, you can look at the PowerPoint as well, if you want, for reference, but again, up to you. I'm also happy to, if you get into it and you have questions you want to talk through, I'm happy to meet with you if you want, to get on a Teams call, whatever works. You know, at the end of the day, we want the best list we can that makes sense, especially if you're going to reach down the list on something that maybe has been put in a, a category. District Two kind of modified theirs more than others, let me pull up one as an, as an example. So the original list we provided, kind of, this is going back several years now, you'll see group things, there's one, two, three, these different colors, that was based on that kind of screening criteria that I talked about earlier, about near schools and such. There's also some screening that we tried to do based on the water and sewer conditions, there's a lot more research that would need to be done on each individual location to really, I don't want you, I don't want you to take away from that of, hey, they've already looked at the utilities and they're fine. At the GIS level, we, we can't get into the detail that we would need to on the utility side, but just pointing out, if you do go down the list, that there is a location, you hear from your constituents that becomes a priority, that's, as an example, way down in category three or four, or unranked category down here, if you really want to do something down there, I would encourage you to reach out and have a quick conversation and just make sure it makes sense, rather than to put it on the high priority and then we get to and say, well, we have to skip it anyhow, that's not doing anyone any good, right? So, but anyhow, again, I just offer that, I'd be happy to have a conversation with you if there's a need to, so.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for all your detailed work on it, it's so helpful. I know this is not the biggest program for your department, but it is really important to people, and at least from my judgment, you gave us the information we need. And I, my only, my plea to my fellow council members is, I think we do need to figure out more money to do this. We've done this for a few years, we've like, okay, this works, and if we get the money, it won't be at the expense of the other things you're trying to do. But, but we, I think we do, because we've got to make more progress on things.
Okay, sorry to interrupt. One, just thought, and I, another idea, I didn't say it earlier, depending on where those conversations go with whether you find the money or find a way to increase that funding amount. Another example of ways we could do things differently is if those funds are, are limited and we don't want to go beyond the 700,000, do we do an every other year program and do something like, well, it's three locations per district every two years? You know, there's ways we can slice it and dice it to still stay in that 700,000, isn't necessarily, I would discourage us from getting too small in terms of an annual year. If we ended up in that situation, I'd say, well, let's skip a year, let the money build up, do a bigger program the following year, because we lose that economy of scale when we get too small. It just drives the cost up.
Yeah, just a quick note on that, is if we did six blocks a year and we've got 550, it's going to take us close to 100 years to get those things done, you know, so.
But they're really, what I like about the prioritization is when we talk about that, whether 50 miles, we'll never do it, but when you're like, yeah, but if you could do 10 miles.
Totally.
You would change the, the world. The other thing, I was thinking for District One, so I was meeting with Jesse Bank this week, was how many unpaved streets are in the PDA? So to the degree we could leverage PDA dollars that are now starting to come in and say, hey, here's.
Yeah.
The allocation for alleyway money, we'll do, we'll match it in the PDA area. So there are some other.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a good point, I just, sorry to keep adding to this, but there's other little details I didn't add here, but I will take that opportunity to mention, if you, if you're looking at this and you encounter a location that's partially or somewhat commercial in nature, we don't have a lot of that, it's mostly residential, but if it's more of a commercial, I would sort of flag that and let's talk about it, because those tend to have some challenges with them. We had to skip a location in District Three, for instance, that was in West Central, that was near some commercial properties, because we had things like loading docks adjacent, parking for the business that's already being used with some partial pay, you get into some really unique situations. There aren't that many of them, but if you start looking at those and want to prioritize